Everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Syracuse Planning Commission. We will begin our applications and public hearings momentarily. First, we'll take action on the minutes from our last meeting, which was August 18th. Draft minutes have been circulated to the commission members, and it would be appropriate now to entertain a motion for action on the minutes.
Yes, I have a couple of corrections to the minutes. On page seven, in the discussion of the parking lot related to the municipal parking lot project, there's reference to my comment about bike parking and the requirement of one to six ratio. And then a little bit further down, the last sentence on the page says 100 parking spots are proposed. Commissioner Lentz found that the ratio of one to six does apply to this project and would be necessary as a special condition. There was some question about that, and I think that statement should actually read, Commissioner Lentz was informed by corporate counsel that the one to six ratio does indeed apply.
Thank you for that. Any other points?
Yeah, so the second item is on page nine, in the comments of people who spoke in opposition to the project. There's reference to Kathleen at Monticello Drive. That's Kathleen Stibley.
Stibley.
Stibley, right. So that occurs on page nine. There's also a reference to her on page 14 that just has her first name, so if we could add her second name to that. And then the other item is on page 10, in the discussion of the Lafayette project. There's a reference at the end to the approval of the major site plan review. That should read master plan review, not a major site plan review, because I think that is the appropriate language they're using for that kind of project. So those are my corrections. If that's acceptable to everybody, I move approval of minutes with those three corrections, four corrections.
That's the second. Discussion on the motion before us for the minutes. If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Minutes are approved as revised. We move now on to first old business and new business. Just a moment, just a word for anyone unfamiliar with our process. As each application is announced by a member of the staff, we ask that the applicant or the representative come to the podium in the center of the room, provide their name and address for the record, and then a brief summary of the application. Following questions from the commission members, we will invite members of the public who wish to speak in favor of the application to do so. And similarly, we will invite members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application to do that as well. We ask that everyone keep their comments brief to three minutes, and where comments are offered in opposition, we will encourage the applicant to return and address the comments offered in opposition. With that, are there any changes to the agenda that we need to know about, or?
Just one, and that is for, under new business, the Syracuse Developmental Center, SDC project, that is just being postponed. We expect it to be on possibly the next agenda.
Okay, so if you're here for that item, we won't be dealing with it. There will be no presentation tonight, but it will be advertised again when it comes back around, right?
Yes, and that's strictly for the street dedication and the re-subdivision modification.
So with that, we can focus first on our old business?
Yes, I'm just going to tee this one up because it's back before all of you. So this is the South Ave Apartment Project. There are two applications, companion pieces, one being a major site plan review, the other being a re-subdivision. If you recall, back on August 18th, you conducted the seeker review and declared, had a negative declaration for this. And we held this pending a BZA review for an area variance for, to seek relief for maximum building length. BZA reviewed that and approved that on September 4th, and all city reviewing departments are finished, and there are no significant concerns or comments to be addressed moving forward. So now we're able to take and finish public comment, and you may deliberate, deliberate and make a decision on the two pieces without seeker, because we already did that.
Joe, we had the presentation last time. I don't think there's the need to repeat that unless there's anything new with the project. So with that, in terms of public comment for this evening, well, first let me ask my colleagues on the commission, any questions that may have arisen since our meeting in August?
No, thank you.
The only question I had is a reference to the bike rack storage. I'm not finding anything on the plans about exactly where that is, and so if you could just address that.
Sure. There will be a bike room on the downstairs of the architectural.
Great, thank you.
Since you're speaking again, could you just?
Kirsten Freeman, 121 Ruskin of Keuplinger Freeman Associates. You got it, Walter.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if there are no further questions from the commission members, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, come forward, use the podium, provide your name, address, and comments. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. No, we have no speakers in either category. We'll close public comment and turn our attention to the two actions we need to take, one on the re-subdivision and the other on the major site plan review. So looking first at the re-subdivision, is there a motion for action on R-2540?
Make a motion, motion to approve R-2540 as presented, with one condition, that condition being to file the re-subdivision with the county clerk within 62 days, and also, yes, right, file this re-subdivision with the county clerk, period, within 60 days.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion for the re-subdivision. If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Re-subdivision for R-2540 is approved, and we turn our attention now to the major site plan review, which is MASP-R-15-16. Is there a motion for action on this?
Make a motion to approve MASP-R-25-16 with three conditions beyond the general conditions. The three conditions are discussed in the staff report on the project. The three conditions are, the landscaping buffer along the northern, western, and southern property shall be maintained in good condition. Two, is the applicant shall collaborate with the business and neighborhood and business development department regarding the six affordable housing units. And three, the applicant shall keep collaborating with all individual city departments to address any concerns they have.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion before us now for the site plan review. If not, then all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? That is approved, the major site plan review for MASP-R-15-16. Thank you. Our next application, please.
Next up is a re-subdivision, R-25-35, at 621 Seymour, 619 Seymour, and 114-16 Amy Street. Owner of 621 is Greater Syracuse Property Development Corporation, or the land bank. And owner of 619 Seymour and 114-16 Amy Street, and applicant is Nulinda Garcia. All of these are in the R2 zone district.
Thank you. Terry Luckett with the Syracuse Land Bank, 1941 South Solana Street. 621 Seymour Street is the vacant lot. It's measures 45 by 147, making it technically buildable. But 801 South Wilbur Street is a house that sits right next to it, and it's essentially right on the property line. Because of that, and because, also because Harbor Brook flows underneath that site, it's not a likely candidate for new construction. Excuse me. Nulinda Garcia owns 114 Amy Street that backs up behind this property. She, it's a two-family. She lives upstairs and runs a daycare center out of her apartment. Her mother lives downstairs. She also owns the vacant lot at 619 Seymour Street, which is in the floodplain. She'd like to fence all three properties in for the use of the daycare center.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
I've been looking at the maps, and it's kind of hard to tell, looking at Google and also the other maps, but it does look like the property line between 801 Wilbur and 621 Seymour, it looks like there's some.
Like it's over?
Yeah.
It was over, and there was, they started building a garage or something, it fell down. It's not there anymore.
Okay, so it's not there anymore, so there's nothing that needs to be demolished?
Not there anymore.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Further questions? Okay, thank you. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. We have no speakers. We'll close public comment and turn our attention to the seeker review for this.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the EAF Part One prepared by the applicant and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone reviewed the EAF Part Two prepared, also contained in your packet? Does anyone believe the proposed action will have a moderate to large impact under seeker? Having determined there are no moderate to large impacts, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration and complete the EAF Part Three accordingly.
Thank you. Is there a seeker motion to that effect?
Make a motion to issue a negative seeker declaration?
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on the seeker motion? If not, all in favor of the motion before us, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The seeker motion carries, and we can move now to action on the re-subdivision for R-2535. Is there a motion for action on this?
Make a motion to approve R-25-35 as presented, with one condition beyond the general conditions, that being to, to make sure that the re-subdivision map is filed with the county clerk within 62 days of approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on the re-subdivision motion before us. If there's no discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? R-2535 is approved. We move to another new application.
Next up is a major site plan review. This is the Mispah Tower renovation, MASP-R-24-40 at 350 Montgomery Street and Jefferson Street. Owner, Tom Siriou, and applicant with him, architect Michael Fresina. This is in the MX-5 zone district.
Evening, or evening at this point. Michael Fresina, 4531 Hollyshire Way. So the project as proposed is obviously existing, six-story structure, Mispah Towers. We're looking to do three floors of apartments, well, eight apartments, third floor, fourth floor, fifth floor, and then the upper floor is one apartment. And ground floor being mixed use, which is going to be leased to a tenant. That is a, how do I describe it? It's a restaurant-bar event space, making it accessible, adding accessible toilets, prep kitchen off the side there, and then there's also a law office on the second floor. So turning the building from nothing to mixed-use apartments, event space, office.
Thank you. Are there questions for the applicant concerning this project?
Let's talk a little bit about the floor plan for the first floor. I'm trying to understand the arrangement between the restaurants, seating, et cetera, and the stage, I think, which is being renovated. So you're planning to have performances, entertainment there?
The current first floor is sloped, non-conforming slope to ADA requirements. It's like an inch and a half, plus or minus, because it was cast in place. So the plan is to infill that, that sloped floor to make it completely level with the entry point, which actually makes it level with where the stage area is. At this point, I'm not aware of any performances that he's planning on having in there. As far as I'm, my understanding is it's going to be a restaurant slash bar area, more of a self-serve wine place.
Okay, thank you. And I was also wondering, I was just a little bit surprised on the upper floors with the residential units, the number of units. I haven't been in the building, so.
Yeah, they're large.
They're not covering the whole floor plan, or are they covering the whole floor? Because I understand that once you get up to the third floor, the footprint is smaller than on the first and second floor. So I was just curious about that.
Yeah, the, there's, there's kind of two sides of the building. On the Montgomery Street side, the upper floors wrap around the sanctuary.
Right.
So those apartments on that side of the building wrap around it, which is why it looks like it doesn't cover the whole floor plate. There is no floor plate in the center. You can see it down to the roof of the sanctuary. On the far side, which would be the north side of the building, it does cover the whole floor plate. So it goes third floor, fourth floor, fifth floor, sixth floor, but the sixth floor portion is only part of the one larger apartment on the top floor. The other three are independent apartments.
Right, right, okay, great, thanks. The other question I have is, is there a requirement for eight bike storage places? I'm not, I wasn't able to tell exactly where they are. Is there going to be a locker on the first floor, or?
No, we have, we have, we have storage on the first floor, and then we have storage on each floor outside of the apartments.
Thank you.
First floor lobby area, and then outside each apartment. I sent that, I think I sent that over prior to this meeting, a week ago, week and a half ago.
Are there questions?
Well, okay. So you've had visits with us and with the Landmark Preservation Board, so commending you for going back and forth and keeping up with the wishes and goals here. I seen the plans, there's work to do restoration on a back wall.
Say that again?
Restoration on a back wall of the building.
Brick restoration.
Restoration.
I don't have anything called for, for brick restoration on the back of the building.
One of the illustrations, must have been done already.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Oh, on the, so the alley side, you're talking about the?
Yes.
So there.
Exterior, right.
Yeah, we have, this was a few years ago, we got approval to put in a fire escape.
Okay, because I see that there.
Yeah, that's already done.
Plans for fire escapes on each side?
Yeah, that's, that's, that was done 22, 2022.
The picture and references on page 122.
That's, that's from the structural conditions report that we did in 2020 prior to the, the work being done.
So that's been taken care of.
Yeah, that's all done, yep.
Okay, and then the agreements on the different replacement doors and windows have all been worked out.
Yeah, we have LPB approval on that.
Okay.
Yep.
Bringing you forward from 2022 to 2025, I understand it takes all.
It's a process, yeah.
Takes us all a minute to remember that.
Yeah, no, we, we received LPB approval on the rest of the exterior a couple weeks ago.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Additional questions?
Yeah, so I guess following up on the brick restoration project, which has already been done, because there's a reference in the staff analysis, under the conditions to sidewalks and brick branding areas that must be brought into compliance. I assume the brick branding areas, is that referring to the restoration work, or is that lower work on the?
That was a question that I actually had. So Amber reached out to DPW, that was a question directly from them, a comment directly from them. They just wanted us to put a note on our site plan stating that if we did damage any of the exterior sidewalks or brick branding, that we would replace it during construction.
Okay.
But there isn't anything there that needs to be replaced currently. They just wanted to cover us just in case, yeah.
Okay. So that's, that's during construction?
During construction, yep.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. Are there individuals wishing to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward to offer your comments at the podium. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. I don't see anyone rising to speak, so we will close public comment for this application, and first turn our attention to our seeker review.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the EAF Part One prepared by the applicant and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone reviewed the EAF Part Two also contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe the proposed action will have a moderate to large impact under seeker?
No.
Having determined there are no moderate to large impacts, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration and complete the EAF Part Three accordingly.
Thank you. Is there such a motion?
Make a motion to issue a negative seeker declaration?
Second.
Both. Discussion on the seeker motion before us. If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Seeker motion is approved, and we may now proceed to act upon the major site plan review for this application, MASP-R-2440. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve MASP-R-2440 with seven special conditions beyond the general conditions. The seven special conditions are as follows. The first is, any future exterior modifications to the building facade, et cetera, shall be reviewed and approved by the Landmark Preservation Board, as you're well aware of the process that you've been through multiple times now. Thank you. Two, should the property owner propose any changes to commercial tenancy or addition of dwelling units as part of future development, such modifications will be subject to the zoning review process and require approval in accordance with application requirements. The three, as we have discussed, the recommendation that if during construction there is any damage to the sidewalks and the brick branding areas, that they must be repaired. Four is, any future phase of the project shall not disturb the city of Syracuse right away, specifically with respect to the marker located in the sidewalk, which the city is very interested in maintaining that. Five, application, applicant shall incorporate interior bike storage accommodation, one space per eight dwelling units, as we discussed. Six, application, applicant shall obtain all required licenses and permits prior to commencement of any alcohol sales or premises prior to provision for live entertainment, that's so as life, live entertainment license, as well as a liquor license, if there is to be any live entertainment. And seven, applicant shall adhere to the conditions of approval for the certificate of compliance.
Certificate appropriateness.
Appropriateness, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on this motion for major site plan review. If there's no discussion, all in favor of this motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The major site plan review for MASPR-2440 is approved. Thank you. We move to another application with three parts to it.
Yes, this is the last new business item on the agenda. This is titled, "The East Brighton Ave Battery Energy Storage System Project." It includes three applications, a re-subdivision, R-25-41, special use permit, SP-25-24. That's to put this under a major utility land use. And last, a major site plan review. All this is located at 426 East Brighton Ave, owned by Joseph Tessario of Cranesville Block Co., LLC. Applicant and representative, Terrence Nolan of New Leaf Energy, and Adam Fischel of Marathon Engineering. This is in the CM Zone District.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Good evening.
Hello, my name is Terrence Nolan. I'm with New Leaf Energy. Our offices are at 433 River Street in Troy. As noted, the application is for 426 East Brighton. With me is Adam Fischel, our civil engineer, Caitlin Enger, who is also an engineer, and then Adam Jacobowski, who works for a firm called ESRG, which is a fire safety and battery safety group that has developed a safety plan for the project. So we were just going to begin with a brief summary of the project, and then after the civil kind of piece, I can also talk about the interconnection piece and why it's important for grid reliability and for offsetting the need for peaker plants, which are all during peak demand. But I'll introduce Adam at this moment, if that's okay?
That's good. Thank you, Terrence. Adam Fischel, Marathon Engineering, we're the civil engineer for the project. We are looking at the re-subdivision map currently. Are you driving? Can you go to the site plan, please? So currently, the, one of the site plans being brought up, we're looking to separate the current .9 acre lot into two lots. The front lot will be about a half acre, and the back lot will be close to .7 and change. And that'll house and allow the two, the two five-megawatt battery energy storage sites to be located on the current parcel.
While they're doing that, just the, the need for the re-subdivision is dictated by the regulations, is that right, in terms of accessing some incentives?
Accessing the battery storage, we have to have two separate interconnection systems for each site, two separate tax ID numbers for each facility. And sometimes in other municipalities, we can go through a process called a courtesy subdivision, where you're not actually creating a physical deeded lot, but a essentially a leased parcel, if you will. But here, understanding the city of Syracuse's regulations, we would have to physically split the lot into two, two separate lots, so that's what we're doing here. So here you can see on the site plan, the front, oh, my pointer's not working. We got the front site, which is on the Lot 1, and then the rear site, which is on Site 2. Essentially creates an L around the front lot. And we have a paved access road coming off of Brighton Avenue with a new curb cut, just due north of the existing rather wide curb cut. And going through some initial review with the city staff, our first, our first middle was a gravel, a gravel driveway, and you folks came back and said we have to have it paved. So we're proposing it to be paved here in this situation. We have a eight-foot-tall security fence around both facilities with a gated, lockable access, and two separate rows of interconnection poles that consist of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven poles each. I'll let Terrence go into some detail there in a minute. As part of the site plan, we're also doing some right-of-way improvements, primarily because on the, you know, due page south of the new driveway, we have the larger shaded area there that was the old driveway. We are proposing to remove that, restore the curbing and the roadway, restore the sidewalk, and so on in front of the project site. We are not proposing any drainage improvements. I know we got some comments from city engineering speaking to that, so we'll follow up with city engineering on those items specifically. There are also some requests from city parks department about adding a couple of trees along the frontage. We'll go back and review with the electrical team as to whether or not we can add those two trees along the frontage, just due to separation concerns we might have with combustible material near, near the facility. So that might be something we go back to the parks department and ask, hey, we'll, we'll purchase the two trees, but could we put them in a different spot on the road frontage, or something like that? Right now, we're not proposing any water improvements. There is a fire hydrant due south, at the southeast corner of the project site there, so we understand that we have to coordinate with the local fire department to, you know, confirm fire department access. They had a couple of questions on water, fire protection facilities, hydrant location, and that kind of thing. So we'll certainly be circling back with the fire department on those, those items. As far as, I touched on stormwater, we're not adding any new stormwater improvements, but to balance the little bit of tree clearing and brush clearing that we have along the south side, right there where the cursor is, we are proposing to convert a portion of the surface within the parcel to be lawn. I'm not sure if anybody here is driven by the parcel, but most of it is either broken-up concrete or impervious cover or gravel surface. So here, we're looking to restore some of that and convert it to a lawn, a lawn surface cover to help offset that slight increase in impervious cover. So in essence, you'll add, you'll have no net change in the ground cover types here. So again, no change in stormwater runoff, really no need, in my opinion, for any stormwater infrastructure. But again, we'll go back through and coordinate that with city engineering. That's the long and short of the site plan. Terrence, you want to touch on the interconnection and some of the facility features?
Yeah, I just, it might be useful just for one minute to talk about the reason for the batteries in terms of how they fit within the NYSERDA incentivized programs and how it may benefit the city, how it will benefit the city. So as you know, there's an adjacent, well, you may not know, but there is an adjacent substation just to the south, which is managed by National Grid. That, we believe, is a subtransmission substation, and then further south, there's a distribution substation. And what these batteries are doing is during the hottest months of the year, when there's peak demand in, in the city for energy, what's typically happening now is that these large fossil fuel plants, one I believe is located to the south of the lake, and then there's another one just further east, they turn on during those time periods to account and cover for that demand. They're generally older, less efficient power plants that are set aside for that purpose. These batteries have the capacity each to power approximately 300 to 3,500 homes each. So they have a lot of power, they're five megawatts. They have the power to, they have the ability to do that for a four-hour period. They can be turned on and turned off, kind of dispatchable, through software controls. They will charge at night, essentially during the night, whatever the energy mix is in the grid, which is going to be a mixture of hydro and wind and natural gas, so that during the day, when they're most needed, that's when they're, they're able to be turned on. So NYSERDA has announced an incentive as part of the governor's Clean Energy Initiative to incentivize about 750 megawatts of batteries like these in upstate New York and another 750 megawatts down in New York City, all for this grid resiliency purpose, that it is a local source of grid resilience, so that it reduces the likelihood of brownouts and blackouts and other issues that happen with the electrical grid as demand increases. And so, a city like the size of Syracuse, you know, from a, from a planning perspective, appropriate to have some of these batteries in strategically located places near substations. This particular substation has capacity. We've received a study from, from National Grid, which indicates that we can connect. And so in addition to essentially, and we will be doing some upgrades to the substation as part of the project, so we, we will be making a financial contribution to National Grid, they're going to be upgrading their safety equipment at the substation. Another important point, these batteries are going to include the recommendations that have been proposed to the Uniform Fire Code, but not yet fully adopted. These batteries will include those recommendations, which my colleague Adam can talk about if questions arise regarding that. But that will include a 24/7 off-site monitoring through a battery, battery monitoring system. We've come up with an emergency response plan, which the fire department has had a chance to, well, receive, not given their fully comments yet, but we're going to be working with them. There are a number of other recommendations in terms of how to keep these safe, and the technology is actually significantly improved in that regard. So looking at it from the point of view of location and how it may serve customers, location, it's not adjacent to a residential area, it's near existing electrical infrastructure. And the last piece is that it will offer, the actual energy that is generated off of the batteries will be batched with other local generation by National Grid and offered at a discount to low and middle-income subscribers of between 6% and 10%, so that the battery, so that the actual energy that's being produced is going to be cheaper than what would otherwise be charged for that certain, that energy during that time of day. So again, in terms of the citywide, New Leaf is interested in, and we've had a very helpful relationship with the codes department in terms of figuring out how to shape this application. We've been permitting batteries in New York City for the last five years and have developed the standards with the fire department of New York and Adam's firm from a safety perspective. And so we're looking to just be as proactive and transparent with the city of Syracuse as we can be about where it's appropriate for this type of infrastructure. And when we look at this site, which is currently being leased as a container space, we think it's a good site. It's not adjacent to residential area, fits within the adjacent kind of electrical infrastructure. It'll, we will work to improve the, you know, the visual and visibility of the, of the project, as, as Adam indicated. And I've also reached out to the neighbor, to the north, and he and I are going to hopefully meet tomorrow, if possible, to talk about sort of, that's, he's the only neighbor that has expressed some, you know, concern about, questions about the project when our board went up as required. So we, he and I are in conversation, and I believe we'll have an opportunity to work with, with him as well. So that's a, that's a summary, but if there are questions, we have our experts here who can answer them.
The regulations that you said hadn't been fully adopted yet, are those state regulations, federal regulations, or someone else's regulations?
Ask Adam to address that question. Adam Jacobowski.
Council members, Adam Jacobowski, Energy Safety Response Group. Those are state regulations, so.
State, okay.
Fire code of New York State. They are scheduled to go in place on January 1st. And they, NYSERDA put together a working group with a lot of fire safety experts, and they are the ones who proposed these new codes. And they were all adopted, and starting January 1 of next year, they're all going to then be regulation.
So they're the same regulations that would have governed the project if you had, say, a six-month, if you were here six months later than today?
Correct.
Okay. You're.
Every project going forward.
You're opting to run with those regulations for this project now in advance of when they would normally take effect?
Yes, and I guess is, they haven't been finalized, have they been approved to take effect?
They have. Great, so the answer is yes. Makes sense.
Thank you.
Just to clarify it, though, it's, I'm glad to hear that they're, they're going to do that. Technically, an application that comes in before January 1st is under the 2020 version of the New York State Uniform Code. From what I'm hearing, they're electing to adhere to the, the new standards that will be official January 1. But technically, any building permit application received prior to January 1 is under the.
Don't see a lot of this, do you?
We had an update, I think it was in 2015, the last code cycle, where they kind of had an open window where you could go either or, and then they had a hard cutoff. So it's unusual, but New York State and the Code Council, they're trying to have more updated code to keep up with changes and innovations in building materials and, and different design concepts. So it's a big change, but I know this is one of them, and it's, it's good to hear that you're, you're doing that. And I know our fire department and our deputy chief of fire prevention and his staff are going to work closely with them on all these details, you know, before any building permits are issued.
Among those details would be, where I just saw was the turnaround, provide provision for turnaround at the end of your access road, right? So those specifics will be worked out?
Yep, that will be part of the site work permit application, making sure that our fire department has, you know, proper access from the firehouse to respond to this, and proper provisions to pull in and fight a fire, and then also get out.
Get their equipment out, too.
Those trucks are expensive.
Yeah. Should we do anything specific to acknowledge the adherence to the January 2026 codes rather than the existing codes?
If you want to, you can, I don't know that we need to.
Well, if we don't need to, then we shouldn't. We don't need to waste eight words.
But the, the comments from fire prevention, they're working with them currently.
Right.
So that will be understood in the conditions of the.
Yeah, continued collaboration is a condition for.
Right.
Yeah, so I guess, I think I have two other questions. First of all, I'm just curious about the ownership. So is Lot 2 going to be leased by New Leaf, leased or owned by New Leaf?
We, we have a 25-year lease.
It's a lease, okay.
For each, yes.
Right. And I'd be curious, is the delivering electricity back to the grid, is that going to be turned on automatically, or is there somebody sitting at a monitor somewhere who does that?
That's an interesting question. The, so that the NISO, which is the wholesale that delivers electricity throughout the region, forecasts when peak load is likely to happen. And so when we, typically it'll be in the afternoon sometime in the middle of August or something like that. And we will, we will almost certainly be dispatching the energy during that timeframe. Our interconnection agreement with National Grid permits us to charge between 10:00 PM and 2:00 PM, and discharge between 2:00 PM and 10:00 PM. And the discharge, and typically it comes in the afternoon. So the, that's a long answer to your question. The short answer is that they will continue, they will be continually dispatched during the hotter months of the year, likely during arid times of peak demand remotely by virtue of software from those NISO. So when we see that there's going to be a lot of demand, we can dispatch the battery.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
I guess the only other question I have is just probative before we do the seeker, there are some trees that you're removing, but there's not a lot, right?
Right.
Okay, I was just kind of curious, because we have our friend, the Indiana bat and the northern long-eared bat that are in that area, but there's not enough trees that you have to worry about that? Has that been mentioned at all?
Well, yeah, I'll let you answer.
We provided some documentation in the packet that spoke to that, that it either is a closeout issue, or our consultant is coordinating with respective agency, DEC and U.S. Fish Wildlife to evaluate whether there actually would be any impacts there or not. We are, we are doing our due diligence on that front.
Okay, thank you. Generally, the issue with the bats is you can't remove trees.
Right.
November to March. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick, I just want to ask a quick question on the potential screening on Brighton Avenue. So the current curb cut is going to go back to curbing, conforming curbing and walkway? Yep, right. And the new curb cut is now? How wide? I can't remember.
The driveway here is 20 feet wide itself.
Okay, okay.
So it'll be, you know, this, this re-graduated area, that's.
That was the old one?
That's, that's the extent of the old curb. So you can visually see it's more than a half, it's a reduction.
So my question on the screening for Brighton is, I like the. So my question on the screening for Brighton is, I like the idea that you're going to put some green along the front there and the side, so that visually, when I'm driving by or walking by, it's less, uh, what is that? And I do appreciate the response in terms of combustible material, but in working with the fire chiefs, I guess I would ask if they are in agreement that there is something that can be planted where that curb is being removed, to, again, just break up the, what is that factor? I hope that you would be open to that conversation. The fire is going to go way ahead of my visual concerns, obviously.
Yeah, I think...
As it should.
Sure. I think there's a few different ways we could consider screening it. I would prefer to go the vegetative route, if we can.
Yep.
You know, we've done a fair amount of solar across New York State, and, you know, now we're starting to get into battery. You want the, any kind of combustible a certain distance, typically is 10 feet from a fence line, be it the perimeter fence for the facilities. So we could look at, you know, how much space does that leave? Could we put the tree, between that no-go zone and the back of sidewalk, if you will, on Brighton Avenue, maybe put in a couple of trees? And if it's not enough room for a trees, could we put a hedge row of some taller, taller, you know, seasonal color shrubs or something like that, that are kind of fast-growing to kind of break up that visual, to get to your point there, yeah. I think there's a few different ways we could look at that.
Okay.
I'll just confirm that, we would do that.
That's great. Thank you.
One last question. What's the nature of the business for your neighbor immediately to the north that you're going to have a conversation with in the near future? What type of business is that?
I believe it's ST Foreign Auto. They sell automobiles. So we've already talked...
I can't remember the order of businesses up there.
Yes, yes. So I think that, based on the conversation that I had this afternoon, where there was an initial concern, that I sense that there's an ability to work something out with him. That's my sense.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions?
So I guess the question, I have a question for Jake. We just got a request by the 4th District Common Counselor, who is the representative for your area, that we hold action on this tonight, as she would like to ensure or lead, I'm not quite sure which, Jake, some community discussion or community engagement around the site, the project, et cetera. I mean, I'm not opposed to that. I'm assuming that from your perspective, time-wise, that's not a fatal flaw. Yep.
May I address that one?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. I am familiar with that request. In fact, I've reached out to both council member Patriona Jones and council member Williams, because it's the adjacent district.
That's right.
And I've submitted a request to TNT for a presentation for Valley and Eastwood. And so, so we're very, because there's the science and the engineering, then there's the perception. And so it's important that the community understand what these are and what they serve. And the reason I wanted to just let you know that, my understanding is that in the event that the Planning Commission takes action, that there would then be a subsequent referral to the common council. And so we're certainly not approved. And then obviously, there's the building permit and all the other requirements, which are conditions. So the request I made to the common council member would be, could we take the timeframe between this body and the common council to do a, sort of a formal outreach? And I guess I had reached out to her as much as maybe two months ago about all of this. So I haven't heard back from her on that. I think having the commission rule on the site plan and on SEAKER, but then subject to the final approval that would be necessary, would then create the space for us to now have the serious conversations with the community about this. And if there are additional improvements that happen as a result of that, then, you know, we're very open to them. So that's sort of the hope here.
So the resubdivision and the master plan review, we would approve, but the special use permit is a recommendation to the common council. So they have final decision on the special use permit.
Correct. And I sense that I'll have to make sure we satisfy her concerns before then, as well as the Corey Williams, the other council member.
That would be my recommendation to the board is, and I think we can even put it in as a condition that, you know, they make a good faith effort to continue to coordinate with Councilor Jones-Rouser and do this outreach. But, you know, to his point, she can also hold the special use permit item before council until that's satisfied. So I think we've met the requirements of the zoning code. I think we've appropriately, you know, we've public noticed this. No, I don't believe anybody's in attendance to comment on it. This is the only written correspondence we've received. So, you know, I think moving forward, we can put that in as, potentially as a condition, if you choose, move it forward, knowing that we can make this happen, and ultimately, the council can hold it as long as they wish. Not to put it on them, I'm not saying that that's what we need to do. I think they're going to make that happen and address the concerns of the community. And when that's done, I think Councilor Jones-Rouser will allow the item to go forward.
So for the recommendation for the resub, or the application for the resub, then, we would make as a condition that resub, it is contingent upon approval of the special use permit by the city? Because normally, we don't do that for a resub. I'm thinking in terms of the 62-day clock. That would start, if it's contingent upon special use permit, then that 62-day clock would start after special use permit is approved by common council? Correct?
Yeah, I think we could do that, because ultimately, let's say it didn't go through, I don't think they'd want to do the resubdivision, right? I'm not saying that's going to happen, but all interested parties may want to wait till that point anyway to move things forward.
Or maybe bring the resub back.
I don't know. And I also don't know that we need to do that, because a resubdivision can really be something that's outside of, you know, land use approval. Like, they have a right to do a resubdivision regardless if they were going to do this project or not. I think we can act on it, but, you know, if you want to put that condition in, I don't see an issue with that.
Can I ask a question on the 62-day clock? Is there a way to take that out of there, or is that a city statute that it has?
62?
62, yeah.
That's the county. So that's the actual filing of your resub map.
Right.
If you don't file it within 62 days there, they don't consider it.
Believe it or not, people do forget to do that.
That's what I'm getting at.
Well, if you're in the middle of trying to do a project.
Try to do a project, or there's other things outside our control that may delay us from actually being able to pull that trigger. Is there a way to come back and have that clock reestablished or reset?
Well, that's what Commissioner Luntz was saying, is have the condition go in that once common council formally approves the special use permit, which would be at least a few weeks from now, that that's when the clock would start, giving you the maximum time.
Not tonight.
Yeah, it wouldn't start tonight.
Okay. And we all just hope it'll get on the common council agenda quickly.
Yeah, I'd ask for the presentation opportunity from TNT as soon as possible, and hopefully that'll be in the next few weeks. I'll bring the same team.
Further questions for the team of applicants? From the commission members? No, nothing else? In that case, are there any individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward to do so, providing your name, address, and comments. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward to do See no one rising to speak in either category, so we'll close public comment, and we can address our SEAKER review before proceeding to the three components of this application.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the EAF Part 1 prepared by the applicant and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone reviewed the EAF Part 2 also contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe the proposed action will have a moderate to large impact under SEAKER?
No.
Okay. Having determined there are no moderate to large impacts, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration and complete the EAF Part 3 accordingly.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Make a motion to issue a negative SEAKER declaration?
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on the SEAKER motion before us. Excuse me. If there's no discussion, and if I don't choke, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Our SEAKER motion carries, and we can now proceed, I think first, to the resubdivision, Is there a motion for action on this?
Make a motion to approve R-2541 with one special condition beyond the general conditions. That special condition being, the applicant shall successfully file the resubdivision map and the proposed easement agreement with the On Dog County Clerk's Office within 62 days after the common council approves the special use permit.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Discussion on the resubdivision motion.
Just a note for the record, the conditions set forth by the Planning Commission, as well as the discussion on the record, that the applicant is speaking with the neighbor and will be speaking to the neighborhood groups and the district common councillors that are all stakeholders in this action. So those things will happen before the common council meeting. I think our motion encompasses all the, all the plans are going to have to fall together for this to work out.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? So this resubdivision is approved with the conditions noted. We move to the special use permit, which is SP-2524. Is there a motion here?
Make a motion to approve SP-2524 as presented with a recommendation to the common council to affirm our approval of the application. And beyond the general conditions, there's one special condition, which is to continue to collaborate with the city departments, the fire department, the county, and all other relevant parties with respect to safety concerns, et cetera.
A second?
Second.
Thanks. Discussion on this motion for the special use permit. If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? So this will move on to the common council for their final action. And we consider now the major site plan review, MASPR-2518. Is there a motion for action on this?
Make a motion to approve MASPR-2518 as presented, with one special condition beyond the general conditions, that being, as before, with a special use permit, continue collaboration with the city departments, the fire department, and all relevant agencies with respect to safety concerns and other issues related to the site.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion for the major site plan review. There's no discussion. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? So that, too, is approved with the conditions noted. So we've done as much as we can do on this application for tonight, but you're not to the finish line quite yet.
Signing project.
Thank you.
That's all our application, but we have some other items to consider tonight.
Yes, two under other business. They're both three-mile limits. First up is in the town of Clay, 3S-2511, 5,004 and 5,008 West Half Road. Nathan Hunter of Northern Credit Union is the owner-applicant. We have city engineer's approval.
That's what we like to hear. Is there a motion for action on this?
No objections from city departments. I recommend approval of 3S-2511 as presented.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this motion for the three-mile limit case in Clay. If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? 3S-2511 is approved, and we have one more in a different town.
Yes, last one in the town of Camillus, 3S-2512. This is at Airport Road and 3652 Armstrong Road and 3758 Armstrong Road. Owner-applicant is Honeywell International and represented by Barclay Damon. We also have the city engineer's approval.
Excellent. Any questions or discussion on this? If not, is there a motion for action on 3S-2512?
With no concerns raised by city departments, I move approval of 3S-2512 as presented.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this motion for the three-mile limit in Camillus. If there's no discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? 3S-2512 is approved. Anything else to come before us tonight? Okay, motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
We didn't quite meet our 55-minute record two meetings ago that...
Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're close, though.
Opposed? We are adjourned until the 20...